United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, as we come to you tonight, I want to thank you for this opportunity too, for allowing us together, Lord. Lord, I ask you that you would be with the ones that's been affected with the storms that's been going through, Lord, and as I understand, there's possibly some more coming through tonight, Lord. I ask you that you would just lay your hand on us and protect us and keep us safe. Lord, I ask you that you would be with us through this meeting, Lord, lead, guide us and direct us in the direction that you would have us to go. I name and pray. Amen.
All right. We'll call Alderman James.
Present.
Alderman Nash. Alderman Hinderleider. Alderman Steelman is absent. I am present, City Administrator Walden.
Present.
City Clerk Apple.
Present.
City Attorney Weber.
Present.
Public Works Director Nash.
Present.
Chief of Police Chase.
Present.
Economic Development Director Burbidge.
Hello?
Thank you. We have no hearing of persons this evening, so the first item is going to be under bids for a battery-operated wire squeezing tool. Mark, were you going to discuss that one?
Yes, that's to replace the tool that they had before. Batteries, could not get batteries, 40 more, bungers, everything's about more out on it. And that's the only thing we have to squeeze up, the heavier sized wire on these secondary services when you get up into the two op, four op, so I ask you just to.
So you don't have any tool right now to do that work?
No, we don't. I can, you know, until we can get one, open ends or close, first get it online, if I have to be more, I can get over one pretty quick to squeeze something down, but we need something.
Close, is this budget, you think we can help like a long time for anybody?
Well, if we have some, if we have some wired DVD squeeze can, we've got to get them done for these services. We're starting to redo some of these services.
Can you rent?
A tool like that. Can I rent one? You know, I don't even know. They're pretty high. Lot of co-ops, they're not using squeeze tools anymore, and people's had, they've been so many injuries, shoulder injuries and arm injuries, that those are almost getting to be a thing in the past, and everybody's going to the battery operated. Tight squeezing tools.
I guess I'm in the old age, but we never had one that worked for city.
Well, we never had that size wire when you worked for the city, though. You're talking four seventy-seven, four op.
How often use that?
On secondary services quite often.
Do we have a motion on the battery-operated squeezing tool?
If I make a motion, then we can talk. Good. If I make a motion, then we can still discuss it.
Discuss.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve the battery-operated squeezing tool for the local department.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, discussion?
What part of the budget will come out?
This is the other equipment maintenance, and we've got budget for that or tools, you know, either one.
Okay.
What's the budget? I don't have it in front of me. For the year, the budget for the year? Do you know what the budget for the year is? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Give me a minute, I can get that up. Is this all Makita brand? I'm trying to read the quote, and it appears.
I think it's a Burny.
Yeah, I did read that. Well, and then it says something about Makita, the battery, I think it is.
Close, we're onto the budget, I think. I should make that on our dead, okay? Put one in the budget for this coming year. Is my suggestion, just me.
Are there any other companies quotes can confirm? Quotes on?
There's, there's two companies make those. One, one is Greenlee, one is Burny. They're going to be about the same price, I can tell you that right now, across the place where I worked before, they had both types. The, the Greenlee, the thing about, if we buy the one that we've asked for, then we have the dies. If you buy the Greenlee, then you've got to buy their dies. Those dies, sometimes those dies will interchange.
Is it state did too? State did? So, for equipment maintenance, we'd budgeted eighty-five thousand, year to date through April, we'd spent sixty-one eight, so there's twenty-three and change left.
We still have money in the budget for tools?
Tools is pretty close. This will need to come out of equipment maintenance unless we adjusted the tools budget.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, Alderman Hinderleider.
Yes.
Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Nash.
If we got the money in the budget.
Thanks, sir. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, need a motion, second to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion, accept.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider.
Yes.
Alderman Nash. Next item on the agenda is under reports of city officials, boards and committees, Mr. Walden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Alderan, the Community Center at the Armory reports four thousand four hundred and seventy-one participants in their programs for the month, month of March, that includes events, meetings, fitness center activities, gym stats, their public access, role addressing and fingerprinting. Then we've released updated information on city operations, given the first phase, Governor Parsons showed me a strong recovery plan that took effect today, and you have a copy of that. The public's encouraged to remain vigilant as we proceed with transitioning through this next phase of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The mayor's declaration is scheduled to expire May twenty-second. So any extension or modification to that will be shared with the public. There's none on the agenda related to that for this evening, so we'll coordinate with the mayor if there's anything to bring back for the next meeting. This week and next are the spring cleanup with our trash contractor, WCA. They'll be doing special cleanups on, or pickups on regular trash days. Then we also have a special electronics appliance and tire collection scheduled for Saturday, May sixteenth, from nine AM to one PM at the city shop at Third and Grand, that's by the electric substation. Those bringing items to the collection are asked to stay in their vehicles, with city staff and other volunteers transferring items to the collection trailers. Information about what can be brought in is available from Jill Hallwell with Merrimack Regional Planning Commission. Her phone number is five seven three two six five two nine nine three. Or we've got a flyer that also lists her email if you'd rather correspond that way. And we'll have copies of that flyer posted on Facebook pages as well as at the places around town. At the last meeting, I was asked to share an update on capital projects. I passed out a copy of a worksheet that lists the projects in our current budget. Besides the budgeted amount, it also includes the year-to-date expenditure and then the remaining budget balance. Some of the items have been completed, so I will do a blow-by-blow account, but just try to hit some highlights. Then, of course, if you have any questions, we can come back on any of them. The, usually what constitutes a capital project is items of five thousand dollars or more that meet the criteria to be considered a capital project. And in our chart of accounts, usually those are the line items that have an account number of seventy thousand or higher. You have a couple that I, were on our capital project list when we were looking at the budget, the crack seal and street maintenance and the special street fund, that's Fund Two-O-One, those are considered maintenance items, so that's why they're not in the seven, seventy thousands group of accounts. But you see, we had budgeted twelve-five for crack conceal, and then the two hundred thousand for street maintenance that we discussed last week. And again, the special street fund can only be used for street-related items, and if that two thou, two hundred thousand's not spent this fiscal year, it doesn't go away, it just stays in the fund. And so the board has some prerogative on what you'd want to do with that. Just other items, loader lease we're doing out of special street, that's a monthly payment. So it didn't start right on July one, but we'll be under the fifteen thousand budgeted for that payment this year. The backhoe lease payment's been made, won't be anymore coming out of that. We'd budgeted fifty-five thousand for a used tractor with a side mower, that purchase has been completed, came in three thousand under budget. When we first started the budget discussions this year, the park and rec had more than two thousand dollars worth of planned capital improvements for the parks with our budget iterations, that amount got decreased to two thousand. It could have been moved to the park maintenance part of the budget and not listed as a capital project. Again, usually capital projects are items five thousand or more. Fund Two-Ten, by the way, is parks and rec, I'll try to let you know which fund I'm transitioning to. So for the city's match portion of the tap grant, that's the sidewalk that's going in by the high school into the city park, we have a total of around sixty thousand dollars, that's our match requirement. And so we had budgeted for thirty grand of that to come out of the parks and rec budget, that's the thirty you see listed there. And then we also have a sister entry, if you will, in the capital improvement sales tax fund that I'll show for that sap. And so that project has started, the contractor's making progress on it. I don't know when the timing of those payments will be. If it doesn't come due this fiscal year, it will be due next fiscal year. So either in this year's budget or in next year's budget, you know, we'll have that thirty thousand that will need to come out of parks and rec towards the project. In the parks and rec budget that was approved, there was twenty-five thousand dollars towards a gym project at the community center. That commitment's been fulfilled, so nothing remaining there. Our COP payments for, related to parks and rec, and this is the pool, those have been made. And so the payment amounts sometimes fluctuate just a little bit from the schedule. So we budgeted a little bit more than, than what was needed, but basically that's done. Parks and rec had budgeted, you see, twenty-five hundred for satellite park signs and seventy-five hundred for a security system. For a couple of reasons, they've been holding off on that. For the park signs, that's because of a branding project that's underway, that we shared some images last meeting related to that. And then on the security system, we are expecting to have some network availability on our AMI system that could provide some options for security cameras, so I've asked the park board to hold off on triggering that. As we are working on our budget for next year, of course, we take stock where we're at this year. We had some repairs that needed to be made, crack seal repairs on the tennis courts that were done last fall that were needed, if the courts were going to be ready for use by the high school this spring. Of course, that COVID-nineteen hit, but parks and rec may need some of that combined ten thousand to cover that the, the crack conceal repair on the tennis court. But we'll bring all that to the, with the budget, you know, discussions. The handrail by the bridge, we'd budgeted eight thousand for that, it came in at seventy-four thirty-two, that's completed. Soccer field improvements, we'd budgeted thirty thousand. That includes a twenty-five thousand dollar payment back to capital improvement sales tax fund, plus some money for design work that was needed for the LWCF grant. And so we're going to need to stretch our balance to cover the twenty-five, but again, we'll, you know, fully cover that as we get into the budget discussions for next year, plus as we look at year-end adjustments for this year. We had budgeted ten thousand dollars, this is when Attorney Steve was our city attorney, and there's been some ongoing discussions with our new city attorney Weber and Jared regarding code updates and building permits and code enforcement. When they have things ready to bring to you that we have no the expense for, that will be a bid item, we'll let you know what the expense would be to implement what they're proposing. And so when, when they're ready for that, we'll, we'll bring that to you. The sidewalk construction, we had budgeted sixty thousand. Part of this was related to the sidewalk project on Fourth Street in between iron and nineteen. And then the other part is related, related to like when we do curb cuts or other sidewalk work that our, our crew does. So we just spent fourteen-three year-to-date, so there's forty-five left for that. I'm looking at the prospect, given our issues with utility billing, we may need to look at the timing of when we do the sidewalk and street light project on Fourth Street. I'll try to get a capital project committee meeting soon, and we can fully discuss that, and you'll have, it'll be clear where we're at, and we can see what your thoughts are on, you know, what we want to go ahead and do or what we want to hold off on doing. Three-O-One, we changed funds there, sorry about that. Three-O-One is the capital improvement sales tax fund, that's the half percent. And so here you see thirty thousand budgeted for the tap grant, that's the other thirty grand I mentioned that, that goes along with the thirty from parks and rec. We had some engineering fees that we've paid, some of that may be reimbursed. That's a reimbursement program where we pay it upfront, then we turn it into MoDOT for reimbursement. And so I expect that to come in under budget. And again, if we don't get, you know, that invoice to pay that this fiscal year, we'll just need to budget it for, for next fiscal year. The, the commitment doesn't go away. Stormwater, the capital improvement, we budgeted ten thousand for widening and adding pipe, year-to-date, we've done forty-seven oh four. In the cemetery, we talked about surveying some of the currently unsurveyed areas where there was an abandoned trailer court, and so we still have some utility work that we need to do to get some abandoned lines out of there. And then it's just cutting the surveyor loose to survey that. I don't know when the horizon is for when we run out of available space, but you know, sometime in the near future, we need to go ahead and, and have that survey work done, so those gray spots can, can be mapped. Software training, this is our ENCODE utility billing and general ledger software. We're waiting to hear back from ENCODE for scheduling this week. They're under a travel restriction right now, so this will be remote training. But I fully expect for us to be able to get that done this fiscal year. Between some new programs we're rolling out and new staff, it's much needed. And so, you know, looking forward to getting that training. Out of cap improvement, we had budgeted three hundred thousand for the old middle school demo. The portion that we paid for this year came in at two seventy-three. So there's twenty-six thousand and change under budget that that came in, hang on to that. You know, at the last meeting, we discussed, you approved the change order that was twenty-three five, I think. And so part of the reason for wanting an update on our capital projects is to see how we could cover that. There's one potential source, but hang on to that. The city hall auditorium, we had budgeted thirty-five thousand. We've had some incidentals out of that. The maining, major items are two things, ceiling tiles. That's expected to be about eighteen to twenty thousand, this would be the acoustic dampening, they're not just your run-of-the-mill ceiling tiles.
Does that install?
That was with our guys putting it in, Kevin, I could look at the labor differential, you know, for having it installed. And then the other expense is house lights in here. I think we've got somebody that had worked with us on labor, but we'll need to cover the cost of materials. We'll take bids on that, it'd be a stand-up, you know, we'll spec it out, and so that's what the remainder of the auditorium budget's intended for. The admin building roof, we had budgeted twelve-five, at the last meeting you awarded, or meeting before, I'm not sure which, a bid, ordered a bid for that, that came in at ten, three eighty, I think, ten and change, so we'll come in a little bit under budget there. The admin building security, this is something that I've talked with the board for a while on, making some security improvements at the admin building. And we are nearly done with, we went ahead and took requests for qualifications for architects related to that. And we proposed it originally as a design build, and none of the options submitted were, we thought, doable. And so we're using one of the architects to do enough work that we believe we can do most of the work ourselves. And so that will let us stretch those dollars further. The materials estimate will be nearly forty thousand. And the items over are, that trigger going out for bid will be put out for bid, and those will come back to you for approval or not. Even though this is year-to-date showing not anything's spent, I would say about half of that's committed at some level, either with the architect that's already done services, or small dollar items that have been ordered. The two major items would be bullet-resistant glass and then hardened counter area. And so those will be bigger dollar items that we'll bring back to, to you all for consideration. The industrial park downtown area signs, we had budgeted thirty thousand for that, we hadn't spent any to date. And part of the reason for that was that branding project that I mentioned earlier, we wanted to get the logo and that selected before we proceed with that. This was one of the projects that our Missouri S and T teams were working on. Sally, were you the, one of the point people on that, or?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, oh, that was Sean, okay. Getting my projects mixed up, they kind of blur together here after a minute. But we'll have some ideas on that, you know, that's an area that, you know, at some point, we want to, you know, of course, implement the new logo and branding and so forth. What speed we do that will be up to you all by what you fund. The industrial park's been without a sign for some time, the old one blew down. And, you know, that will not be a cheap sign, it could speak for a chunk of the thirty thousand. Not speaking for the IDA board, but they may have interest and willingness to participate in that. We'll work on a proposal. Is this fair to say, Sally, that we would bring back to this group on, on a proposed sign and so forth? For the park?
I'm sorry, did you ask me a question?
Just nod your head, yes. The industrial park site work, this is related to pursuing the certified site status. We had budgeted forty thousand, so far year-to-date, we just spent four hundred and twelve. We're waiting for survey work to be completed there, and then that will, isn't expected to be a huge amount. But then also tree clearing, and, and we hope some of that expense is offset with logging revenue. But, you know, those proposals will, will come back to you all. The police vehicles, out of capital improvement, sales tax, we had budgeted seventy-three for, this was for two vehicles. Those purchases have been made, there may be some small incidentals related to finish them up, but it'd be under the forty-three seventeen that's left in there. The airport's always interesting, it's a challenge to budget for, because of course, we have to work with the engineering firm on that work, and then it's a reimbursement program through MoDOT Aviation. And so each year, I press our engineering consultant on what we need to budget for, based on, you know, out of pocket, we expect to spend related to the approved projects. And this year, we had budgeted seventy thousand for the hanger apron design, and we haven't spent any to date. I'm waiting for feedback from the consultant on what we can expect to be out through the end of June. I don't know that we'll need that full seventy thousand. Usually how this works is we use the capital improvement sales tax for our match part, the ten percent. And so the ninety percent, we normally do out of the airport fund, that's coming up on the other side of your sheet. And so if we're looking at doing the work that's not part of the grant, then that's on our dime. And so, you know, seventy thousand, that would be ten percent of course, seven hundred thousand, we didn't have that big a project scope. So I will get a more definitive answer on where we're at on the seventy thousand budgeted for the hanger apron design. We had budgeted twelve thousand for storm sirens, that's been ordered, actually two have been ordered. We're paying for one, and then we had one that was blown down that'd be covered through insurance. Then we had the budgeted two pickups, one for animal control and one for building inspector, those have been purchased, came in under budget. In the community center at the gym, there was a, part of the gym project there was the nap grant. We had committed to some in-kind work, and this one got by me. This was actually approved in June of last year. And so it fulfilled our commitment, in-kind commitment by covering the expense of that work. And the board made a decision on our recommendation that we pay a contractor to do that work instead of us doing it ourselves. We didn't get the invoice till after the fiscal year had closed out, so besides the twenty-three five, you know, from last that change order, I'll need to bring a budget adjustment to you to cover this twenty-one nine. It was approved in, like I said, June of last year, but we didn't get it paid in last year's budget. As I find those things, I try to, of course, budget for them in this fiscal year. So as we're looking at next year's budget, you know, I'll try to hit all the angles and see if we've got outstanding, like that, you know, a tap grant kind of deal or something where we've committed, we just didn't get it paid. And so we, you'll see when we get done, there's room in capital improvement sales tax for both with the middle school demo coming in twenty-six, you know, under, and other projects, you know, where we won't need, all that was budgeted. You know, I, I feel comfortable, I can bring an adjustment that you'll be satisfied with for that twenty-one nine. Then moving out of capital improvement sales tax, the Fund Five-O-One, that's the electrical fund, we had budgeted thirty thousand. We had budgeted thirty thousand, uh, both for transformers and poles. Those have not been purchased yet, uh, with the issues with our utility billing, uh, and the impact on our, uh, utility revenue. It's going to be my recommendation that we hold off on those if we can until next year's budget. And so, uh, our, and we, uh...
Those are surplus for?
It's stock as we, you know, need to replace poles, uh, or transformers, uh, we have them on hand. Um, and so, you know, our, uh, utility billing revenue issue is a timing issue. We fully expect to get caught up and there's some agenda items related to that tonight. Uh, but not all of that's going to happen by the end of June. And so, uh, we don't want our guys to get caught without, you know, what they need to take care of repairs and so forth. But, uh, uh, you know, Brian's looked at our stock and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we think we can hold off till July, uh, to place those orders. And so what we'll do is, you know, uh, bring it as part of the budget recommendation for next year is what that, uh, amount is. We had built a shop at, budgeted six thousand for, uh, a shop at the electric department. Uh, some of the door equipment came in a little bit higher than what we expected. Came in at, uh, over six thousand. So you, you see, uh, we're over budgeted on, on that one line item. The pole change out, we had budgeted thirty thousand to do a contract pole change out. Uh, that, uh, we were originally thinking, uh, by this building here for, uh, tuck pointers that we've talked with to do work on here. The lines are much closer than what they, uh, care for. And so, uh, we're looking at, uh, um, you know, contracting that out. We don't have a firm's bid, you know, quote to bring to you on that. I don't know if we'll have that by the end of June. Mark, you know, that could be, uh, something we hold off till next year, uh, if you're of a mind to. Uh, the tuck pointing isn't something that we've, uh, priced out yet. Uh, I expect that will be a bigger ticket item. And so, uh, that would be at, at the earliest would be in next year's budget anyway, unless we, you know, find some stash in this year's budget. And, uh, so anyway, there's, uh, thirty more thousand.
Uh, is that, is that include one or two poles or what, is it a street or, I mean, what's the scope of that? I don't remember with the thirty thousand.
Well, that will, that's going to be, what I want to look at is see if we can put an alley on it. When you put an alley on it, you put the wires out towards the street. It opens everything up back this way. See if there's a possibility that, that we can, you know, look at, you know, you change the poles, um, you change the transformer.
Thanks. So besides the thirty grand that we had budgeted, uh, from sidewalks and capital improvement out of electric, we had budgeted a hundred thousand for the ECLD light upgrade on Fourth Street. Uh, the thought was, uh, there was some electric infrastructure related to that project, uh, with the original design. Uh, we changed that design that will lighten the electric requirements drastically by not having a snow melt, you know, end to end. And so, uh, the Archer is redoing, uh, updating this, the spec on that. We'll still go out for bid, if nothing else, for a budget amount. Uh, but the timing, uh, we could choose, uh, I don't know that we could get it done before the end of June anyway. But, you know, if you're of a mind, we could, uh, whatever timing we would want for that project, we could include that in the bid specs. Couple of, of other options related to that is, uh, work with McKinstry and the program we looked there for the energy loan. Could be a source of, uh, funding for streetlight improvements. And then Mary came across, uh, uh, some, uh, regulatory wording on the special street fund. It can cover streetlights, uh, that's close enough related to streets. So we may have some other funding options there besides just us, you know, paying for it out of the electric fund. Uh, I'll, I've got a conference call, uh, scheduled with, uh, the McKinstry rep, uh, Wednesday. And I will try to bring as updated information as I can in our budget discussion for next year. But anyway, uh, you know, holding off helps us with, uh, the billing issue and, and tempers effect on our reserves to let us ride, ride that out a little bit. Um, again, utility billing's a, a temporary issue. We hope to have that made whole next fiscal year.
Is that, so the re-scoping of that could change the overall projects in general, it sounds like?
It, it could, uh, cause this, uh, scope, uh, you know, the hundred and thirty thousand roughly was, uh, Fourth Street between iron and nineteen on the south side. And so with, with taking the snow melt out, uh, that, we might be able to go further for a given amount of money.
Is there, so I, I've gotten a few comments about lights being out. I think we were saying we were delaying those because of this project. Are we good?
Well, if there are lights we have in stock, I think we would go ahead and replace them. If there, you know, if it's a bulb issue.
Right.
Uh, uh, the police guys one night, you know, drove Fourth Street, made an inventory of, uh, a list of lights that were out and we've given that to the electric department. So if there are bulbs that we have in stock, we can go ahead and replace those. I don't know that we'd want to order, you know, the older style bulbs or, or replace the older style lights. If we've got, you know, most of the new stuff we're putting up is LED, you know, so...
I didn't know if there was something, if it's going to be a year out before we do this project, it might be worth going in, getting something done with lights.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Um, we'll, we'll look at what our like, expected timing is and if it's going to be far out, then that, you know, we'll see if we can go ahead and get, at least get some of them, you know, lit up.
Thanks.
Uh, the F-five-fifty, uh, we had budgeted sixty for that. Uh, that, uh, has been ordered, um, should be in hopefully a month or so. Uh, expect, uh, you know, for it to come in and us pay for it by the end of this fiscal year. And it came in quite a bit under that, I think it was in the forties.
Yes.
So, you know, there's over ten thousand, uh, but that came in under budget. Uh, the COP payments, uh, those have been made, uh, both November and May. And so we switched from five oh one, which was the electric fund, to five-ten, which is the water fund, uh, besides the COP payments. Uh, we had budgeted thirty thousand to do some rehab work on well number eight. And mother nature either smiled or frowned on us, I'm not sure. We'll say she smiled on us. Uh, it got hit by lightning. And so, uh, we replaced the pump and we expect insurance to cover most of that fifty-six thousand. So we, uh, except for our deductible, uh, we'll, uh, most of that thirty thousand will be left unspent in the, the budget. Uh, the locator, uh, we had budgeted sixty-five hundred, uh, for a locator and, uh, looking at, uh, this is out of the water department and our, uh, new superintendent, uh, is looking at what was, uh, looked at there and then coordinating with, uh, Brian and our electric department. Uh, instead of having, uh, two locators of the same type, we're going to coordinate staff and get by with one. And so, uh, we don't expect the need to spend that sixty-five hundred for that. Uh, we had budgeted twenty thousand for water engineering fees. A year-to-date, we're at twelve-one. Uh, backhoe lease, we had budgeted twelve, uh, that lease payment's been made eleven-nine. Uh, hydrant repair kit, we had budgeted thirteen thousand. You awarded, uh, approved a bid for that, that's been ordered, uh, and under the thirteen thousand, if I recall. Uh, new well design, uh, we had budgeted, uh, altogether, you see five hundred and seventy thousand there for the design, construction and construction admin for a new well. Uh, out of the forty thousand for design, uh, year-to-date, we spent, uh, a little over eleven thousand. Uh, we expect to have a, uh, uh, property agreement to bring to you, uh, soon, uh, that will have some expense associated with that. Uh, we're waiting for approval from D and R on the location and, uh, preliminary aspects of the design. How much of that will get done, that, you know, will be invoiced for by the end of June? I, I don't know, but, uh, if we're able to get, you know, some grant funding through D and R, you know, it would be our recommendation that we continue with the project. So what doesn't get done this fiscal year, uh, we would hope to include in next year's budget. It's a big ticket item, obviously, uh, but, um, you know, this year's budget was balanced with it in there and, uh, you know, if we're able to do that in next year's budget, it would be our, you know, a recommendation. Uh, we need the, the additional capacity, uh, to support our, uh, infrastructure and, uh, for expen, any expansion. And so, um, you know, we'll, I'll get you, uh, updates on that as I can and then we'll have further discussions as part of next year's, uh, budget discussions. We had budgeted seventy-five thousand, uh, replace, uh, two-inch lines with, uh, six-inch lines. Uh, we haven't spent any of that, uh, thus far and I don't know that we expect to, uh, this fiscal year. Uh, we'll look as we meet with the capital project committee, uh, what the plans are for next year and make sure that we're budgeting an amount that's consistent with what our plans are. Uh, if we're not planning to, to do it, then, uh, we don't need to, to budget for it. We had budgeted twenty-five thousand to recondition two of the retention tanks, uh, at the wells. Uh, Archer is working on the bid specs to get those out for bid. Uh, I expect those to be, uh, received and brought back to you for consideration, uh, for the end of this fiscal year. We had budgeted seventy-five hundred for a diaphragm pump, uh, year-to-date, uh, twenty-eight, almost twenty-nine hundred. And I think that's completed, that, I don't expect any more expense related to that. Uh, five-twenty is a sewer fund and we had budgeted, uh, sixty thousand, uh, for, uh, flow study. Uh, this ended up being included in special services in our regular budget. Uh, the regular budgets, uh, uh, got different account number schemes in this, you know, seventy thousand plus. But it was on our capital project list when we approved the budget, so I, I put it here. Uh, I would hope that we have, uh, uh, bids to bring to you for consideration for the end of this fiscal year. Uh, we need this study. Um, COP payments, uh, budgeted and, and paid for, uh, out of sewer fund. We had budgeted fifty thousand for Eastman's that we discussed earlier and, uh, uh, Attorney Weber is working with others on that. Uh, as we get those, uh, agreements, uh, reached, we'll bring those back to you for, uh, approval. Uh, aerator pump, uh, we had budgeted fifteen thousand for that and I think with the other work that we're doing, I don't expect that we'll need to hit that line item. The manhole alignment and, and situ form are typically done together. Uh, you see between the two, a hundred and seven thousand five hundred. Uh, we haven't spent any of those yet. Uh, I know Archer is working on the, the specs for that as well and it would be our hope to bring a, a bid back to you, uh, before the end of this fiscal year. Um, and then, uh, uh, gear reducers out of the sewer, five-twenty-one is sewer or D and R, that's depreciation and repla, placement. Uh, we had budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for gear reducers at the sewer plant. And again, I think with some of our bigger repairs that were done, I don't expect us to need to hit that fifteen thousand before the end of the fiscal year. And then five-sixty is the airport fund and you see the remaining, uh, items. Uh, the master plan was from the previous fiscal year and kind of like the one deal at the Armory, uh, uh, had a invoice outstanding that, uh, I neglected to get to budget for. Uh, but when it came in, it was properly due, so we, we paid it. Uh, you can see some of the other line items out of the airport fund, they're coming in quite a bit less than budget. So, you know, I don't expect the forty-four hundred to, to be a problem. The tree clearing project, we had budgeted sixty thousand out of the airport fund. Uh, what we spent year-to-date is thirteen-nine-four-four and that's been closed out. So there shouldn't be anything more that, uh, hits that, that came in quite a bit under, uh, budget. Then, uh, building for equipment, uh, we've had discussions on that. We had budgeted eight thousand and, uh, with the hangers that we're talking with and, uh, we're talking about, uh, airport board meeting in the near future. And so, uh, you know, there may be some portion of that eight thousand needed depending upon which direction we go. Uh, but our meeting with, uh, uh, Rachel and the board and, you know, of course, you're welcome to attend those and, uh, any recommendations from that will, will come back to, to you all. And then there's, uh, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand for the, uh, hanger apron design. And again, this would be for, uh, the grant portion, so we would expect to get reimbursed for, uh, this expenditure. And so, uh, we pay it upfront, then we turn in reimbursement request, uh, to, uh, MoDOT and, uh, for reimbursement. And so this is just the expense side, even though we're reimbursed for it. Uh, we also budget revenue and then we budget the expense. This isn't a net number and so this is actual funds that flows, uh, out of our, uh, our city, you know, budget and city accounts.
At ninety-seven, is that engineering so far or is that? Seemed like that was what that was.
Correct, cause that's about all that's been done. They may have done an environmental or two, Kev, but I'd say most of it's, uh, engineering. And we'll, we'll get a full breakdown, uh, in, in this next budget cycle. Uh, gonna press the guys a little bit harder.
Sounds good.
That's a lot, uh, but, uh, you know, I, I feel the, uh, you know, twenty-three-five that was approved, uh, last, you know, meeting or previous meeting, we can cover, uh, the twenty-one-nine that, uh, I missed, uh, what I'm comfortable, we'll have enough coming under budget that, you know, I can bring you back a budget adjustment that will cover that without compromising, you know, integrity of any of our projects and, uh, you know, uh, of course you can, uh, uh, you have the power of the purse as we bring recommendations for bid awards to you all. You can, uh, not approve those. And so, uh, even though you approve something in the budget, it doesn't obligate you to do it. Uh, you know, if it meets a criteria to come back to you all based on the dollar amount, you're going to get another swing at it. And so, you know, the bigger items left in here, uh, will be coming back to you all, you know, for consideration anyway. Do you have questions or comments?
Ray, I know you're looking forward to this coming year. Do you feel we're going to have more income coming in than what we're not going out that we can pay for that on our debt? We had a couple of big budgets, uh, big items last year that I don't think we'll have this year.
Uh, Kenny, I think as we catch up on our billing issues, you know, we'll have, revenue should be strong next year. But, you know, part of what the board will need to look at is, uh, uh, replenishing our reserves because there's no getting around needing to use those reserves, uh, for this fiscal year. What's that?
I was, I was talking, also on that, so we can get us in a more comparable position.
You know, we'll, we'll work through revenue projections together. Uh, the expenses will be part of what this board approves and the difference will be up to the board ultimately, uh, how much to replenish reserves or if you want to, uh, when eligible, uh, to put that money towards COP. I don't think we can pay those back until, uh, we're five years into it. Uh, so, uh, we're, what, twenty-seventeen is when we started that? So it may be twenty-twenty-two before we can, you know, uh, so, you know, I'm, uh, my job is to work with staff and bring in, uh, a, a budget, uh, to you all that meets our current obligations, that makes the reserve replenishments, you know, that, that you all want. And then, uh, beyond that, uh, you know, uh, however, uh, you know, we want to, to manage those, those funds.
I know, Ray, we did have a couple of more big items last year that we didn't get that in and some of them didn't go as high. I'm just looking at this year to next year.
I, I would expect within probably next two or three weeks, uh, you know, having the, uh, well, I mean, it's time to have the capital project committee meetings and, uh, we won't, and we'll invite the candidates to come to that. Uh, uh, you know, with the, uh, election being delayed, uh, that, uh, that's a different dynamic. You know, they're all public meetings, they're open, and so, of course, our current board, we'd expect to be there. We hope our candidates that can will come. And then that way, regardless of how the election goes, we'll need to hit the ground running. With the election being June second, our first meeting in June would be June one. So that second meeting in June, the, we'll certify the, if, you know, as it stands right now, we're certified the election results, swear the newborn in. And maybe we'll see that night or sooner or after be voting on a budget.
I'm kinda hoping I'll be all things.
Take your medicine, Kenny.
I was asking the question, why do you have plans for next year? Kinda need to think on that a while. We have, I think we've done pretty well this year to compare to some of the big items.
If we can ride what's happened with our billing and the timing of that and still have anything in our reserves, you know, but we need to come back and get those, you know, reserves. They're there for a reason. I mean, we had, you know, the billing is a timing issue. But, you know, the bad part of it, you know, is gonna fall in this fiscal year. Hopefully, we make up, you know, what we can and, you know, there's other agenda items, like I said tonight, that might help soften that. But, you know, if it's mainly next year before we, you know, get hold on our billing, then, you know, we'll just, you know, the challenge with next year's revenue projections is gonna be sales tax. And so, you know, yeah, utility billing, hopefully, we can, you know, control our destiny a little bit there. But sales tax, you know, that's, that's what we look to Sally for help for in the taxable sales and, you know, getting through this virus and, you know, getting the economy back rolling again and hoping our sales tax doesn't take too big a hit.
Were you able to pull the April revenue?
It's not hit yet. I don't, I've not seen it yet, Kevin.
I'm just curious to see if they can provide you a way to look at it before.
In the past, we've had some good reserves, and I feel a lot better when we do.
You know.
I think everybody does.
Without it, we, it would have been a lot tougher this year.
And maybe we've done something right, huh?
Well, you know, prior boards and staff working together made those reserves possible, Kenny. And that's what they're there for, and you hopefully don't need them, but boy, it's been good to have it there when we did. The last item under my report is health and life insurance, and I've asked Mary if she can speak to that. Our broker came to us with projected costs for next year. We normally try to go out at least two or, no longer than two or three years, you know, for bids. Of course, the cities' portion in next year's budget will be determined by what's funded. And this is a five-fifty per month per employee that's in this year's budget. This doesn't obligate the city. You can do what you wish with that dollar amount in next year's budget. This is simply taking advantage of a relatively modest increase and letting our, the prescription and provider network stay the same for a year. But I've asked Mary if she can speak to that.
The current rate for our health insurance is, the basic is three-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars a month for the employee, but that includes a five-thousand-dollar deductible. The buy-up plan is six-oh-seven-thirteen, which the city pays five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The employee pays fifty-seven-thirteen a month, and it's a twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible. The H S A is four-seventy-eight-sixty-one a month. That's what the city pays plus the difference between the five-fifty and the four-seventy-eight-sixty-one. We put into an H S A account each month for the employee, which this year is seventy-one dollars and thirty-nine cents, and it is a twenty-seven-hundred-dollar deductible. The projected rate that they came to us with was a six percent increase, which would have taken the three-ninety-five to four-hundred-and-twenty-sixty-eight, the six-oh-seven-thirteen to six-fourty-six-fifty-nine, that's on the buy-up, which would, the city, the employees, if we continued with the five-fifty, would be paying ninety-six-fifty-nine a month. The H S A would have went from four-seventy-eight-sixty-one a month to five-oh-nine-seventy-two a month, which the city would put in forty dollars and twenty-eight cents. But by law, the deductible would be going up to twenty-eight-hundred dollars a month for the year. They discussed with us, because our life insurance is with the Anthem, the health insurance is with United Healthcare. So they, United asked if we would bring our life insurance over to them, and I had to send in information on all of our employees' censuses, is what we call it. And they dropped the health insurance down from six percent rate increase to two percent rate increase, which would take it then from three-ninety-five for the basic to four-hundred-and-two-ninety. The buy-up would be six-oh-seven-thirteen to six-nineteen-twenty-seven. If you stay with the five-fifty, the employee would be paying sixty-nine-twenty-seven compared to the fifty-seven-thirteen. And the H S A would be forty-eight-eighteen from the four-seventy-eight-sixty-one, and we would be putting sixty-one-eighty-two into the employee's account. The only change is the twenty-eight-hundred-dollar deductible from what we have now. And then the life insurance only went, I think, one cent. The Anthem's insurance is going up higher, so the life insurance brought up a penny.
Do you know what that was for Anthem, the change?
What we, I don't know what the rate increase was. We're paying five dollars an employee now for the twenty-thousand life insurance plus the twenty-thousand A D and D. So we, with the Anthem, we're going up to five dollars and twenty cents, but it saved us four percent on the health insurance.
So how many companies did you discuss over this?
Our broker, just, we just went through Anthem, and she felt like this was a pretty good deal.
And what is our total per month per employee?
It would, it varies on what plan we have. Majority of them have the buy-up, which if you stay just at the five-fifty, that's all it would cost the city, and the employee pays the difference. But the basic would go from three-ninety-five to four-oh-two-ninety that the city would pick up the difference if they could stay with the five-fifty, and the H S A from four-seventy-eight-sixty-one to four-eighty-eight-eighteen, which I think I have six on the plan right now, H S A.
And was that the only deductible increase?
And she said that was a law change.
So we need a motion to approve, correct? So do we have a motion on the health and life insurance?
Make a motion to approve the health and life insurance plans proposed.
For motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Alderman James?
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider?
Yes.
Alderman Nash?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Nash.
Then do you have anything further, Mr. Wald?
No, that's into my report.
I do have a couple of questions. On the, you had mentioned the branding. Where are we at on that? Are we, are we finished with that at this point?
I might ask Sally if you wanna, they asked for an update on the branding. We kinda took the collected feedback from you all and have forwarded that on to the graphic designer. And I think there was a consensus with your feedback, and so, I think there's a, is there a selection made? Sally, or do we have something we need to bring back to this board?
I mean, unless they wanna see the final, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page, I think we're good. It, you know, the basic logo with the red lettering, the blue kayak and the wave, and then underneath it, catch the current in the green. So that's what we selected, the city's logo. All the other entities which came from Commerce, it's a very similar logo, same red lettering. Somebody says area, you know, Salem area championship for commerce underneath it. They did add the word Salem into their logo, the small, the word Salem. And then the county, I believe, as of this morning, has made a decision what they're gonna use, and it'll be same red lettering with the blue wave. Now, they will have the courthouse silhouette instead of the kayak. But I think we're all on the same page at this point. And it looks like unless they're working those, we didn't like to see it brought back in the plan.
And then where does that put us? I know that that was part of the whole website design process. So where does that put us as far as the websites are concerned in getting that completed?
My understanding, and Ray, you had more conversations with Joe recently than I have. My understanding is they have started that. They were waiting on the final branding stuff, and I think they've got what they need as of today. But I was under this impression that they have started the website kind of framework so to speak prior to this.
Okay.
So the current project schedule would have the website up and running launched by September one. And as of now, we're still on schedule for that.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Walden?
No, but I, I got two calls this week from very irritable people. They were mad about using the air compressor to blow dirt and gravel on their vehicles over, I believe it was Third and Martin. I didn't know we, that was the way we cleaned those cracks out. And I just wanted some way we could use a smaller, not a smaller air compressor, something else like yours.
Well, those cracks are so deep, we gotta get all that out so we can get down to the moisture to see whether we can seal those cracks up. Can't easily be able to do that. I went over and looked at that. They weren't blowing rocks, it's dust, and it is a mess. It makes a cloud of dust, but they make sure there's no rocks in those.
The person that called, one of them called, they had small gravel over the pavement. I didn't go yet.
There's, you know, that's the only way we gotta find out what kind of moisture's down there so we can seal those cracks. Because if there's moisture under there, we can't seal it. As a matter of fact, they quit, when they got a little ways down from where you were calling, it started down that hill, and they quit because it got too wet. There was, there was too much moisture under that asphalt, and they had to quit.
There was no other way.
There's no other way. My understanding, that's what they've always done. That's the only way of getting that out.
Did we ask people through the cars?
Well, they do. They knock on the door of that place, and the way it came to the door, from my understanding. And, yeah, they tried.
The one that called me said he got home, he was like, I don't know what happened. I wasn't there, I just wanted to teach you we could do something ever, or do it a different way. I wait till the day it's raining, and then it's blowing out.
Well, that's what we're trying to find out, is we don't want the moisture.
What's that high pressure? Looks like we can blow it out, it's a hazard, some dampness in, and that's the pressure.
Well, it is, but when we, when we get it all out, we've gotta make sure there is no dampness there. You know, it can't be wet. If it is, then the patch they put on it, the seal's not gonna last. And that's what we're trying to make sure of.
Well, that'd be a air compressor, we'd blow just about anything, it'll blow rock, you know, it'll blow some mud, and then we'll need some dust and dirt, that's what I expected. I don't think probably, but I never had no complaints about that before. I never know we used it that way. I never.
Any other questions? Righty, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is introduction and reading of bills. Ms. Happel, you introduce bill number thirty-four forty-eight, please.
Mayor, would you like it read in full?
Caption only, please.
Bill number thirty-four forty-eight and ordinance to amend Chapter one-twenty-two Open Meetings and Records Policy, Article One in general of the Municipal Code of the City of Salem, Missouri, by adding Section one-twenty-two-point-oh-seven-five Municipal Records Management. Bill number thirty-four, would you like second read by caption only?
Yes, please.
Awesome. Bill number thirty-four forty-eight and ordinance to amend Chapter one-twenty-two Open Meetings and Records Policy, Article One in general of the Municipal Code of the City of Salem, Missouri, by adding Section one-twenty-two-point-oh-seven-five Municipal Records Management, passed by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, and approved by the mayor this fourth day of May twenty-twenty.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion on bill number thirty-four forty-eight?
Make a motion to approve bill number thirty-four forty-eight.
For motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Alderman Hinderleider?
Yes.
Alderman James?
Yes.
Alderman Nash?
Yes.
Ms. Happel, resolution number eight-dash-twenty-twenty, please.
Resolution number eight-dash-twenty-twenty, a resolution adopting a policy on utility rebate credits for the City of Salem, Missouri. Be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the City of Salem, Missouri shall offer a one-time rebate to eligible residential electric and water customers. Section two, customers that are current through their April twenty-twenty bill are eligible for the rebate by paying the calculated utility bill provided for consumption through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty, provided to each customer by May thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Section three, rebates will be five percent of the stated water and electric usage billed from January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty, and processed as credit to the customer's account. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval, passed by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, and approved by the mayor this fourth day of May twenty-twenty.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on resolution eight-dash-twenty-twenty?
Make a motion to approve resolution dash eight-twenty-twenty.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I think I do have a question. So does it mean people will receive a bill for that whole chunk of time?
We'll show a calculation showing the amounts, and they could elect, you know, which option they're gonna go with.
It'd be right now, it's worth of three options, correct?
The table, you send out something that they know they have a choice.
So we're saying they get the five, they would get the five percent if they can pay all of that at one time? Is that what it is? Okay, just wanted to know.
Are we still okay on our timeframes as far as the May thirty-first date and getting those other two programs up and going as well? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Alderman James?
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider?
Yes.
Alderman Nash?
Yes.
Ms. Happel, resolution number nine-dash-twenty-twenty.
Resolution number nine-dash-twenty-twenty, a resolution amending the City of Salem, Missouri payment plan, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the City of Salem, Missouri shall amend the payment plan originally adopted by resolution number one-dash-twenty-eighteen, Exhibit C, February thirteenth, twenty-eighteen. Section two, the plan will be amended from customer, you quote, "customer cannot exceed three-month installments." Two, customer cannot exceed twelve-month installments, as written in Exhibit A attached to two. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval, passed by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, and approved by the mayor this fourth day of May twenty-twenty.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on resolution number nine-dash-twenty-twenty?
Make a motion to approve nine-dash-twenty-twenty.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I do have one question, and I'm sorry I didn't think of this prior to now. If we switch this, our goal is to help with the repayment of the back due utility bills. If we switch this, does it affect somebody that after we get done? Um, if we switch this, does it affect somebody that, after we get done paying the back, the backlog, so to speak? Um, if somebody's just got a regular monthly utility bill that they're having issues with, does this mean that they are going to be extended out for 12 months? Because I don't think that would, I think the intention was to help with the backlog, but if somebody's got a, a hundred-dollar utility bill, and I'm just using that as a, as a figure, but if somebody's got a, a hundred-dollar utility bill, I don't know that we want to extend that out for 12 months. I think three months is fine for a, a regular repayment.
Well, the, the payment plan as drafted, uh, they would have to be current on their regular monthly bill plus, uh, the additional payment. If, if they're not hold on those two items together, then they're not current. I don't know if that answers your, your question.
I think you're saying, he's saying for future, let's say they take care of this, what we have to back pay. He's just saying for future reference, someone that...
Six months out.
Can't, yeah.
Uh, well, it's up to 12 months, isn't it?
I'm saying, I'd say they're current in six months, six months, months from now, then they would be, they could get 12 months.
I think it's up to...
Yeah, so in, on month 14 from now, we, we've done, we're done with the 12 months, they've repaid the, the three months back.
They would be eligible for another payment plan under our current wording, if they complete the first one.
Of 12 months?
It just says it cannot exceed 12 months.
But they actually current everyone.
It says it's spread out over a specified period of time, so who specifies what the period of time is?
We do that on a case-by-case basis, you know, on what they're able to, to do.
So we could make it a shorter amount of time, it just can't exceed the 12 months? But you don't want to see someone's a hundred-dollar electric bill be...
Yeah, I don't think in, I don't think in general, um, normal cases, we want to extend that out to 12 months. Um, I, I can't see extending it out for them for two or three months like we had prior, but, um, and I see the reasoning and understand the reasoning for extending it to 12 months for the repayment to get the three months clause in. Um, I, I don't see a circumstance where we would want to extend just a normal, regular utility bill out 12 months.
I mean, we could either do that through practice, or we could bring a revised, you know, policy back after this, you know, a year from now, and bring it back to three months. We're not obligated to take it out to 12 months, it's just, you know, to, uh, you know, address the, the issue at hand, you know, uh...
And that's, that's fine, as long as we have, as long as we have that option to shorten it if, if need be. Um, like I said, I, I just don't see, um, extending a regular utility ba, bill out to...
Right.
And there's nothing in here saying we have to extend it 12.
Correct, up to 12.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Any more discussion?
As long as it depends, would depend on their MAC record.
Yeah.
First time person, you might work with them more than you would if somebody had a habit of it.
And that's true. I will go ahead and call for a vote. Alderman James?
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider?
Yes.
Alderman Nash? Wonderful. Next item on the agenda is under new and miscellaneous business. Um, I received a letter from the executive director, uh, from the Salem Housing Authority. Uh, they've requested the Board of Aldermen to approve the appointment of Richard LaBrash, uh, to the Board of Commissioners for the unexpired term of Doris Stimpf, uh, who resigned March 10th of 2020. Uh, her term was to expire October 4th of 2020 and for a four-year term effective October 5th, 2020. Uh, Mr. LaBrash has agreed to serve on that board if approved, so at this time, I'd like to have a motion from the board to approve Mr. LaBrash.
I'll make a motion, we approve Richard LaBrash to the S H A Board of Commissions.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Are we talking about Richard LaBrash senior or junior?
They do not specify. They refer to him as Richard LaBrash and Mr. LaBrash. Um, I was assuming senior, but I forgot all about junior.
Could we postpone this until next time to find out who's in here?
Vote to approve it if it's senior.
I think you would have to, you would have to specify that it's senior.
Right.
Okay. So, yeah, we could, we could postpone it and bring it back, um, after we get some clarification. Any other discussion? So the motion was to appoint, uh, Mr. LaBrash. Uh, we'll call for the vote. Alderman Hinderleider?
No.
Alderman James?
Yes.
Alderman Nash? Okay, we'll get that, um, we'll get that information and we'll bring it back the next meeting. I, I apologize, I never even thought about that. Uh, next item on the agenda is adjournment. I need a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion, we adjourn.
We have a second. Second, any discussion? All in favor, rise and go forth. Thank you all very much for coming.